You ready, Matt? Call to order the Clinton City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please begin with roll call?
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Connell.
Here.
Shumers.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor. I move to approve the minutes of the special city council, special committee of the whole meeting, budget workshop number four, regular city council and committee of the whole meetings of February ninth, 2021, and they be approved as published on February 23rd, 2021. The special committee of the whole meeting, budget workshop number three, of January 28th, 2021, and they be approved as published on February 11th, 2021, and the special city council meeting of January 28th, 2021, and they be approved as published on February 11th, 2021. I move this be approved as presented.
Second. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
All right. Do we have Michelle online from County Health?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. The floor is yours, ma'am. Thanks for coming.
Great. Well, thank you guys so much. So, I would say I have good news to report today. Our cases have decreased, continue to decrease in the last week. Over the weekend, from Thursday, we just had 33 new cases and have gone down to probably averaging six to seven a day versus we, you know, at our peak, we're up to 30 some a day. So, that's good news. Our hospitalizations have gone down significantly. Last week at this time, we were at 62. This week, we are at 52. And if I look at the reports from our local hospital, Mercy's been running one or two. Justice is down to around 14. So, significantly down. Our deaths are at 82, and that has slowed down a little bit. I think I shared that we had kind of a little spike in that, but I do believe that was more related to the November spike and positive numbers and just some of those people fighting for their lives for, you know, the last couple of months. Happy to report, no nursing home outbreaks. Nursing homes are doing well. Our positivity rate in the county has come down to 5.8. But I will say, one of the things, and I don't know how many read over the weekend, the state changed the way they report numbers. And so, they were reporting positive individuals. Now, they are reporting positive tests. So, if you follow our numbers, you will see that our numbers kind of took a jump yesterday because of the increase in tests, but there was not an increase in cases, if that makes it, if that, if you're able to kind of follow me on that. So, you will see our numbers a little bit higher this week than they were last week, but cases have not gone up. And we kind of have that information on the state website that we can find in and get that. So, don't be fooled by the number of state reporting cases because they had backlog on those positive tests. With vaccine, I'm happy to report that we finally received vaccine in the county at noon today. We did not receive vaccine yesterday for public health, but we only received half of our allocations last week, and that is due to the bad weather that they had in the south. Our hub is down in Memphis, and I actually was talking with a FedEx driver yesterday because I got all excited because he came in with a delivery that it was just a supply. And he said that the reason we could not get the vaccine was they didn't have fuel. That all the fuel was being taken down to Texas and that area, so the vaccine was stuck in the Memphis hub. So, we will be working hard this next three days to get the vaccine in the arms. Mercy has their allocation. We have ours, and what we're receiving from this afternoon, I haven't heard if Hy-Vee or Oswald got theirs, but I'm assuming they probably did since we all got ours. So, as far as how many to date in Clinton County, we have done 300, 3,737 vaccines have been given. Series completed, 1,550, and that is just about 2.9% of our population. And if you look at the other counties around us, we're pretty much right with them. So, everybody's kind of in the same situation. Lot of demand and numbers are low, but I'm optimistic that things are going to loosen up here a little bit, especially Johnson &amp; Johnson is going for FBA approval on Friday. The next report, I may be able to report that we even have more vaccine available if Johnson &amp; Johnson gets that approval on Friday and over the weekend. So, I think that's sort of all I have to report tonight. Any questions?
Any questions for Michelle from council? Looks like none. Michelle, thank you very much for the update. We appreciate it. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving to public hearings. I will convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for Clinton Regional Water Reclamation Facility Improvements Project. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Or any citizens online that would like to address the public hearing? Star six will unmute yourself if you're online. Any council that would like to address this public hearing? Okay, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract to Bill Bruce Builders Incorporated for the Regional Water Reclamation Facility Improvement Project. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
The bids seem very competitive and under engineers' estimates, which is always a plus, especially with material costs right now.
Bob won't say it, but he's very happy.
He's smiling.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yeah.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for pickleball and volleyball relighting project. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council that would like to address this public hearing?
This is just solely for the location on Riverfront?
Yeah.
I was wondering why the one other company didn't bid. Do we know?
Dr. Josh.
Yes. Mayor Council, Josh Eggers Parks and Recreation. There was a third vendor that was interested at first, but I think their main assessor got COVID.
Oh, okay.
So, we reached out to them to see if they were still interested, but he's, he's still out right now.
Okay.
So, they were able to put a bid in at this time.
Okay. That makes sense. Hopefully, he's okay.
Yes.
Anyone else that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract to American Electric for pickleball and volleyball relighting project. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we?
Don't forget the rebate.
Oh, Paula's online.
Oh.
Thank you, ma'am. That was Paula Stewart from Alliance, and there'll be a good rebate back for putting in some good LED lights for the facility there.
Oh, nice.
Thanks, Paula.
Don't call you neither. Yeah.
Anybody else? Any more discussion, I guess, on this item? Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning the sale of 220 Second Avenue South to Dale Nichols for $100. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Shumers.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of 220 Second Avenue South to Dale Nichols for $100. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Your honor, I'd just like to reiterate, this is a non-buildable lot, so when people see that the city's selling at the below fair market values because it goes to only those folks that adjoin the property. And so, it's not buildable, and so, he's going to then put it into his, expand his yard and then take care of it. And of course, that's one less expense we have to have for mowing and snowshoe.
Any further discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning the sale of parcels 80-4983-0000, 80-4993-0000, and 80-4993-0001. 349 Fifth Avenue North, 401 to 405 North Fourth Street and North Fourth, and North Fourth Street, okay, to Justin Page for $10,000. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
What is going on? We dealt with this when I was on before. So, this is the first time we've owned it and sold it, correct?
Yes.
Because the last purchase was from...
So, the background was there was an LLC that bought it and then tried to sell it to some citizens.
Yeah, end of the road.
And they didn't own it.
Yep.
And so, uh...
So, that never took place?
Nope. And then, well, they, they spent money they probably shouldn't have, and I don't know if they got it back.
Okay.
So, then what we did was we put it out for bid. Justin came in with a plan back in December to give $10,000 for it. He plans to renovate both up and...
Yeah, I saw that. Quite an investment.
Yep. And he works currently for, he works with the VA, putting ramps in for handicap accessible. And this also, for those that might have got lost with all the numbers the mayor's reading on that, basically on Fourth Street where the New Hope, I would call it the sanctuary after church was for like coffee, where Ms. Allison went as a youngster. I think there's some plaques that might have been there.
No, I didn't go there.
Her family went. Anyway, so, and we're going to have to work, we're going to work with the neighbors too because there's some property line things, and I didn't realize how much surveys cost nowadays, but we're working through that.
Yeah.
I was like, ooh.
So, this actually includes the church and the parking area, which is what is referenced as North Fourth Street.
Yes, in a walk-through that's currently fenced off, that we're going to work with the neighbor and to help, yeah.
Very good. It'll be nice to see that property get improved.
Yeah.
Anyone else that would like to address this public hearing?
We wanted to save it till you came back.
Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution authorizing the sale of parcels 80-4983-0000 and 80-4993-0000 and 80-4993-0001, which is 349 Fifth Avenue North, 401 through 405 North Fourth Street, and the parking lot on North Fourth Street to Justin Page for $10,000. I move this be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell. Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing on adopting the fiscal year 2021 to 2022, 384.15A maximum tax levy. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Is there any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Oh, do we have one? Go ahead.
Off, off to your left. Just real quick, Matt, because this sounds really bad, maximum tax levy. Could you explain that maybe to, so we can minimize the stress out there?
So, I think it was last year that the state passed a new law and order where if you had any change in your budget that was plus or minus 2%, in this case, plus 2%, then you had to bring it to have a public hearing for it, so the citizens could see what you're doing. In this case, just based on valuation, our budget will go up because our valuation increased, therefore, it's already going to make us have to have this public hearing today. So, those things change and go up, and then this would need to make sure that we put them in the council for a public hearing. Close?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. I was trying to avoid it, but... The last two years, you had to have a public hearing.
Good evening. Mayor and council, need a Dalton Finance Director. So, yeah, this is the second year that we've had to do this. This is like a truth in taxation exercise that the state's requiring. We're not raising the 810 levy. It still remains the same 810 levy. It's just garnering more money for the general fund, and since it's greater than 2% more in revenues coming into the general fund or any of those levies that you see listed there on the screen, and we have to, in addition to holding a public hearing for the budget, we have to hold a public hearing for this one as well.
So, a significant increase in the budget, is anything over 2%?
Yes.
Oh.
So, everybody's holding a public hearing.
Yeah.
And our, our increase was 2.8.
In total.
And our levy decreased four cents.
Three, three cents.
Three cents?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Connell.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Iowa section code, is that Iowa section code? 3.84, 384.15 Alpha maximum tax levy. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
Okay, on the audience comment section, I did not receive any yellow cards for this evening. Have you heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Nope. I'll give an opportunity if there's any citizens in the room that would like to address the council at this time, or citizens online. Star six, if you're online, will unmute yourself. All right. Hearing none. We'll move on to consent agenda. Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on consent agenda?
Your honor, I, 7M will be part of the discussion of the cow, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So, shall we just go forward and just let this go? Or how would you like that?
It's just their letter, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just to receive the letter.
Okay.
And put it on file.
All right. Thank you.
Do you want to discuss it, or do you just...
No, I'd rather wait till the cow.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. So, we're taking off 7M.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on consent agenda?
Just a quick question. So, the letter we, we're not approving, because we're, it's a receive, approve, and place on file, right?
Right. We're, we're approving that we received the letter.
Okay.
And we're placing it on file.
Right. So, we're not approving it, so...
We're not approving the funding necessarily, no. Yes. Yes. Okay.
I have a question, your honor. Before I pull a bunch of stuff, so everyone's discussed 13th Avenue North, and you guys have already planned that all out, right?
Yes.
All right. I'll leave it be.
If there's an item you would like to pull for discussion...
No, there's too many items there. If we want to discuss, it, it's fine. You guys have already taken care of it. So, I do want to pull 7R, 7S, and that is it.
Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, it's just general. Are you talking about 13th Avenue?
Okay. Which one is that? Which one is that again?
W. I don't think the actual one would be W, because the other one's just a plan of discussion.
All right.
The resolution is adopted, 7W.
7W?
Yeah.
All right. You're pulling that, Councilmember Connell?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other items from council? Can we please have a roll call vote on the balance of the consent agenda?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank your honor. I move the claims be received, approved, and placed on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Allison.
Your honor, I have a resolution of intent to accept bid in setting public hearing on the proposed sale of 319 to 321 North Fourth Street. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Hook's Pub.
Right next to the property we just talked about.
Yeah.
Right.
Good. We're seeing some little development in that area, which is good.
You know, he, just as a side note, the older building next to the bread building that was falling down, he actually used his money and tore it down and cleaned it all up and made it look nice, so...
And put a nice concrete pad in there.
Yep.
Yeah.
So...
He's been invested.
I think maybe he was going to expand that way.
He hasn't used it yet.
I think that parking's an issue for him, and this is going to help.
He made it flat work to where it would, it sits up against the building.
Yeah. Yep.
Any other discussion on this item? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution supporting the CCBA grant application for a mural program. I move that to be adopted as read or presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I think it's a good program. Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
He asked.
You're back.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Allison.
Your honor, I have a resolution setting public hearing on proposed vacation and conveyance of right-of-way in South Clinton. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Scrolling through.
These land areas were included as part of the price, right?
So, it's two, it's two separate parts. So, we had to do the parcels first, and then once the parcels were done, then we could vacate the streets and alleyways. So the first was done, I think around 270, don't quote me there, but I think the total comes out to 574.
Yeah, okay.
And then, so once that was done, so what we did here was, basically, all the red is, are the vacated streets and alleys, the wider ones, of course, the streets.
Mm-hmm.
We're in South Clinton, everybody. Here's the Palmer plant. But we also vacated right by Jim's house in Bexar Street as well, and then the, between these two, they don't want to buy those right now, and that's fine. But we did that because as you come in off of 4th Street underpass, if you're not going into where Spy of America is, primary route will be 13th Avenue South over to 2nd Street, down to 15th Avenue, and then down, so you can still use the boat ramp facility. And we also need to get access to a market pumping station, so.
Yeah, none of this is the main drag heading down to the boat ramp.
No.
No.
And then.
And for, for the public's sake, 4th Street will remain open for, for the time being. That's the plan. Originally, we talked about closing it off, but that's going to remain open, and then, haven't got the schematic yet, but the pre-treatment plan, I think, is going to be up in this vicinity closer to the Palmer plant. And then that'll connect to 5th Street, so that's for another day.
Roger that, all right. And then, just to verify, we are selling the property in its as-is condition, meaning infrastructure and current road is their responsibility for removal.
Yep, and we're going to work with them, though. It's like, so Jason's been working with John and crew over there, and Eric Fosnot. Some of the sewers that actually feed through here, we're going to switch over from, they were sanitary before, we're going to switch them just to storm.
Mm-hmm.
And then everything's going to come sanitary down 2nd Street. And then down and around as it goes down to the old wastewater plant and into the RWF.
Makes sense.
So, but the other ones will actually become storm sewers that will feed into the same process, so we're just going to merge those together.
Okay.
And save on that. And then they'll have their pre-treatment plant, which will, as I mentioned, it'll actually link up into South 5th Street and then flow down to the RWF.
5th Street?
5th Street's the boat ramp, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Quite off my map, of course.
Dang it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution setting public hearing on proposed vacation of right-of-way in South Clinton. I move that be adopted as read or presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
And those were the orange pieces that were on the map, because we're doing them separate to vacate, but not selling those to ADM.
Okay, any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution setting public hearing on transit grant applications. I move it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Thanks to Dennis Hart for doing a great job, as always, to land a lot of dollars, as you guys can see, the federal state, and also the federal capital, and so we're very proud of him doing that, continuing to run the bus service, and we're very hopeful for 2021 to see ridership jump up as we start to see safer conditions.
Any further discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution setting public hearing regarding proposed capital improvement program for FY 2022 through FY 2026 for the city of Clinton, Iowa. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I just made a point of clarification that we're, we're really looking at like a five-year period, but it's, it's more so the, the type of projects, not that the, the projects would potentially switch, or switch years, or, you know, valuations and things like that.
Check.
It's kind of just not saying that they're 100% a guarantee, it's just.
Those are the primary focuses.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution fixing date for meeting on authorization of a loan agreement in the issuance of not to exceed $8,385,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for essential corporate purpose and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move that this resolution be adopted as read or presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement in the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement in the issuance of a not-to-exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan note of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move this be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Allison.
Your Honor, I have a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement in the issuance of not to exceed $250,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
One quick question.
Councilmember Shummers.
Just for clarification for our audience, how can we break these up like this, Mr. Matt or Anita?
Sorry. No, I'm going to go with Mrs. Sealy.
Because we had us broken down, what, four or five different ways, so.
You're going to talk about general obligation.
I could tell the audience was anxious to hear the answer, so.
Yeah. I didn't provide my color-coded sheet for the entire audience member, so it's a good question. We talk about it every year when we approve these public hearings for the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes. The essential corporate purpose list is the largest list, and essential corporate purpose is just a definition, bond language, for any purpose that the municipality use. Let me read it. Essential corporate purpose intends to fund the normal functions of a local government. So on our list, we have the $3.3 million for pavement management, we have the $500,000 for the demolition fund. There's multiple items in the CIP listing that fall under the essential corporate purpose. General corporate purpose is for things like infrastructure and vehicles. So you can see it's broken down into three because there is also a covenant, I guess, in the state of Iowa code that if it's for greater than $750,000, it has to go out for a referendum. So, these are broken up to avoid the referendum piece, but individually, each of the projects that falls under general corporate purpose is less than $750,000. So an example of that is the iFiber, the $550,000 that we are proposing to supplement the whole $3.4 million.
Five million.
$5 million for the iFiber project. We are only providing $550,000 of that. That and the fiber on the riverfront of $80,000 is combined into the, into the third reading that you just read, which was the general corporate purpose number two for $700,000.
Outstanding explanation, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
Is there any other discussion on this?
Yeah, the iFiber project, I guess I should speak with Matt about this. So the actual costs are significantly.
Actually, it might go up to between five and six million because we're looking to partner with that guy with the US Army shirt, the county. Looking to add the school and then spread it out further and get some funds from the state.
Oh, so most of it is state-funded?
Right now, most of it would be federally funded.
Federal and state.
So we're trying to get a state match.
And so that's our match, basically. So it's a much larger investment than.
Yes. I think when it's all said and done, it'll probably be around $6 million.
Okay.
So our part is the 15 connected city-owned buildings with our own dark fiber.
Okay.
That will happen.
The governor just put a big push out about broadband, broadband expansion, and she wants to put a lot of money into that, so hopefully we can be the, the leader in that charge as we're, as we're doing this project.
Is, is that what I read about manufacturing drive and then 2nd Street, getting those people on board for that?
Yes. So CRDC's been reaching out, Andy's been reaching out to those companies, as well as Josh and I, Josh Hansen, to get their support, because there's some forms you can fill out, and then what's it do to keep the people you have, maybe increase your numbers of people you have because of it. And we think that would put us over the edge to be able to do it, but I don't know of any other cities at this point that have such a comprehensive plan to be able to spread throughout the whole city and then plus leverage a local company besides our national companies.
Would it be good to do it in conjunction with the manufacturing projects that were.
Oh, yeah, that's already on, yes, that'd be part of it, yes.
Okay.
Because remember, that's going to be next two years to do that project, so we have plenty of time for easements, making sure the fiber's there as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending Chapter 80, all train vehicles and snowmobiles. Your Honor, I.
Do we need a, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Go ahead.
Your Honor, I move the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for the third consider, sorry, for the third consideration and all previous readings be. Hang on.
Wave the two prior.
There it is.
Letter D, that's what you're looking for, under five.
Wait, sorry, move the council waive the two prior readings, requirement of Iowa Code Section 380.3, and to place this ordinance on its final passage and adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. In order to waive the two prior readings according to Iowa Code Section 380.3, it is required that we have a three-quarter vote of all council members. Can we please have a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes to waive the two prior readings. We have a, a motion and a second on the, the original motion. Is there any discussion?
So I'll just, I guess, bring it up since I, I guess, came across it. In doing a little research for some citizens in regards to the ATV, UTV, golf cart ordinance, I was doing some, some online searching in our stuff that's at, was it American Legal, I think it is? And found that Chapter 80 already existed, and I don't know if it's necessarily the one that we just passed for the ATV, UTV, and golf carts could have fallen under Chapter 80, but I noticed we had a Chapter 80 that already had all train vehicles and snowmobiles. Reached out to Lisa and Pat and thought, we probably should at least make sure they kind of talk back to each other one way or the other. And so Pat kind of cleaned it up and realized that we did have it there, and so it's just really getting it cleaned up so they don't contradict each other.
Because I don't think in 86 we have snowmobiles at all in that one, right?
No, we don't.
Okay, yeah.
They get their own.
Yeah, so now we're going to have a standalone Chapter 80 on snowmobiles. It'll eliminate all, it eliminates all reference to all-terrain vehicles and the like. And so 86 will cover the ATVs and UTVs, and then 80 will cover the snowmobiles.
Okay. I-80, of course.
All right. Uh, any other discussion on this? Can we do a roll call vote on the original motion, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Connell.
One second. Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for the first consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending Chapter 86 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa, concerning liability for use of ATVs, golf carts, and off-road utility vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Your Honor, I move that the rules be suspended and the council waive the two prior readings regarding requirements of Iowa Code Section 380.3 and place the ordinance on its final passage for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. In order to waive the two prior readings, requirements of Iowa Code Section 380.3, it is required that we have a three-quarter vote of the entire council. Can we please have a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes to waive the two prior readings. Is there any discussion on our original motion?
Pat, you want to take this?
So they, what this does is it ports over from Chapter 80 a liability provision that we felt would be applicable and useful to the city with respect to UTVs and ATVs. That was in the snowmobile code of Chapter 80, and so what this does is add that same liability protection to the city if, if there's an incident involving the use of those vehicles. So, there's, we already had that liability protection with regard to snowmobiles, but now we're going to move that over and have that same basic language in the sections on UTVs and ATVs as well, which is above and beyond what the city, the state code has. So we're going to add that protection here in our local code.
Which in all reality, I mean, is more beneficial for us in the Chapter 86 probably than it was already in, in 80, but.
Yeah, so the snowmobiles are, you know, they're inherently dangerous, and so there's already state code protections for counties and the like, you know, when people are snowmobiling around in public ditches and so on, and they can be injured by city or state or, or county infrastructure. So we thought it would be a good idea to go ahead and have that same language in the UTV/ATV section in 86 because those vehicles are also quick and dangerous, and they can be ridden in places that cars can't be, and they can be in places where we may have light poles and cables and all kinds of different things, and so same sorts of liability protection should exist with respect to that, so.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, moving to unfinished business from the consent agenda, our first item would be Councilmember Sealy, 7 Romeo.
Roger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Oh, I just thought, I don't remember ever discussing this before, and is it a new program, or?
No, this has actually been going on for a few years, and I'll have backup with Chief Joel, but we had submitted in prior.
Did we?
And we were denied. And so Joel and I were huddling, and basically said, hey, let's shoot this for again, and I'll turn it over to Chief.
So Joel Atkinson, Fire Chief. So, yeah, this is the second year they've done 100%
Okay.
funding for it due to COVID.
Okay.
The priorities this year are basically hiring back laid-off firefighters or potential laid-off firefighters due to COVID.
Yep.
Is a top priority, but it is also to hire new firefighters.
Okay.
So we applied in that realm.
You applied in that sense.
Well, we have not sent the application in yet, but we are planning.
Yeah, well, yeah. No, I know what you mean, yeah. So you won't be, you're going to be for three new, basically.
Three new, yes.
Yep. And this covers, yeah, their salary and wages for three years.
Yes.
Do you think we got a good shot? You hope so?
There's 300, they're talking like 300 grants awarded.
Good.
But I know a lot of states have suffered worse than Iowa, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. No, I, I, I guess I don't remember this, applying for this last time.
2019?
Yeah, we did last year.
Yeah, we got some last year.
We applied last year.
I just remember how sad Joel was.
We get two or three last year.
We applied for four last year.
Yeah. I just remember how sad Joel was when he got denied.
Oh, okay. Well, we got to keep trying until we get it, so that's good.
Correct.
All right, I, it was just to chat about it, basically.
Always good to chat.
Yeah.
He'd prefer you do it before the meeting, so.
Well, sometimes the folks at home want to know what's going on.
Any other discussion on this?
No, Your Hon, oh, sorry. Your Honor, I'm going to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Last chance for discussion. Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alisi.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Seeley, seven Sierra.
Thank you, your honor.
Bless you.
I just wanted to call this out because, look at this, we've got four new houses that got built, and this includes, this is just houses outside of subdivisions that are not part of an abatement program.
Yep.
So this is in addition to a lot of other of houses that have been built, and these folks are taking, um, they're using the tax abatement program, and it's going to be a benefit to them and going to save them some money, and it's also a benefit to the taxpayers because these houses are going to go on the tax roll. Actually, one of them's just across the street and a couple, uh, one house down from my house, nice-looking place, and, uh, you know, so it's it's good they get to take advantage of this, so, um, and and we worked on this, uh, tax exemption program, um, a couple years back, and we're able to keep it in place, so, um, it's a good program to have. And I just thought it was cool to see four new houses up, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how many houses were built this year. It'd be, it'd be good to know, or maybe last year, so, um...
Not many.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move this forward.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Can we have roll call, please?
Karen.
Oh, I was just going to say, um, actually, two of the properties were improved, so...
Oh, okay.
Those were built, and two of them were improved, and one of them was very substantial, so it was permanent.
Perfect. Either way, they're getting a good deal on the tax break.
Hundred percent on the first seventy-five thousand, so that's...
How much?
Hundred percent on the first seventy-five thousand for five years. Yeah, so if you if you actually did a rehab on your house and you spent fifty thousand dollars on it, that's all abated for five years.
Mm-hmm.
So all the improvements that you did.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kerns took advantage of it.
Yes, she did.
Yes?
How's that mayor's mansion working out?
I keep putting on the CIP, and you guys keep throwing it away. Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alisi.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.